Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for attending this public hearing on the preliminary report to the Town of Caroline Town Board on zoning. I’m Barbara Newth. I’m a member of the zoning commission. Jean McTheaters, who’s the commission chair, will be arriving later this evening. There’s a sign-up sheet on the table near the door. Please sign up on the list at the table in front if you wish to speak this evening. There are also, I think, a few copies of the preliminary report over there and a map. If you want to take a copy of the preliminary report, you’re welcome to, but please share them. There’s not a whole lot there. The preliminary report includes the proposed draft zoning law as well as a summary of the law’s contents in relation to the town’s comprehensive plan. It also includes a summary of the zoning commission’s activities over the past couple of years. The preliminary report, the draft zoning law, and other information is posted on the town’s website. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear your comments about the preliminary report to the town board. The members of the zoning commission will not reply to your comments or statements made this evening. We’re here today, this evening, to hear your comments. Please address your comments as well as you can to the preliminary report and not to any other speaker. Each speaker will be allowed to make a statement of up to four minutes long. The timer, Bruce, will alert you when you have 30 seconds left. Please stop speaking when the timer indicates your time is up. Each person may speak once. Depending on how many speakers there are and how much time is left in the evening, we may allow attendees to speak for a second time, up to four minutes, but priority will be given to allowing each person attending the hearing to speak once. The zoning commission also welcomes comments in writing by March 3rd. You may leave them tonight with the town supervisor, who will bring them to the town clerk to be compiled for the zoning commission members. Or you can drop off written comments by March 3rd at the town clerk’s office, or you can send your comments by March 3rd by email to the town clerk. The clerk’s email address is clerk@townofcaroline.org. Or you can mail your written comments to the town clerk, postmarked by March 3rd. Please do not applaud or call out remarks so that speakers may be heard. You’ll need to come up to the podium and speak into the microphone at the podium. The hearing is being recorded, as you can see. The zoning commission members are Michelle Brown, who is not here this evening, Ernie Bales, I’m Barbara Newth, Bruce Murray, our excellent timer, Bill Paducah, and then later Jean McTheaters will be here. Town supervisor Mark Whitmer is here. Where’s Mark? Somewhere over there. I believe other town board members are here. Cal Snow, I think I saw Cal, and Tim Murray over here, and, oh, and Catherine Goldberg is here. Okay. So also, just so you know, Tim Murray, town board member, is the liaison from the town board to the zoning commission. So at this point, we’re ready to get started, to hear your comments. Again, you’re limited to four minutes. You’ll get a 30-second warning from Bruce, and then he will let you know by signal that your time is up. Our first speaker is Cal Snow.
I respectfully ask the zoning commission and the acting chair, the zoning commission, to increase the duration of time given for a statement to five minutes from four minutes. Thank you for considering my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Next speaker is Pete White.
Yeah, can I turn the speaker up? Microphone.
How’s this? Can you hear me if I speak like this?
Yes.
All right, thank you. To paraphrase Smokey and the Bandit, I have a long ways to go and only four minutes to get there. Yesterday, I sent an email to Bill and copied Jean with some questions about the water resource overlay, and I got a very good and fair reply back from Bill, answered some of my questions. Very briefly, I had three questions. One was, the current map is a very low resolution, and Bill corrected that, so the one that’s on the, if it’s on the website now, is a higher-resolution version and corresponds in resolution to the one that was put out there in May, so thank you for doing that. My third question was why only one map instead of the five they started with, and there again, I think Bill’s answer was satisfactory on that one. They could do Hamlet maps, you know, if people really thought necessary, and my reply back to that was, if there’s no information lost by having just the one map, then I think one map is fine, given that it is higher resolution. I still have a bone of contention, though, with the second question that I asked, and it relates back to that document that was, it’s got a big, long title onto it. You can find it right here. Yeah, it’s “The Water Resources and Flooding Overlay District in Detail.” .pdf, and it was an explanatory document put out by the commission, I believe, late last spring, maybe in the early fall. But there’s a sentence in there that really troubled me, and I’m not really satisfied with the answer you gave on that one, Bill. The sentence is, “The overlay map is not exact in some locations, for example,” and I’m quoting directly, “the overlay map is not exact in some locations, for example, along some types of wetlands. The boundary of the overlay are intentionally drawn outside the specific areas in which development restrictions would apply in order to prompt the developer to ground-truth the actual water resource boundaries.” And I objected to that on the grounds of ambiguity, not being, you know, not being precise. Bill replied that, well, I don’t have time to read the whole reply, but the gist of it that I got is that the boundaries drawn on the map are to trigger an abbreviated site plan review, not necessarily indicating where you can’t build, but where you would have to ask if it’s okay to build. Is that from me? Oh, okay.
Give him an extra 15 seconds.
Oh, thank you. Ring that phone again. I’m going to go on record as saying that I replied this back to Bill and to Jean. I find the answer unsatisfied if what you mean is that there are two buffer boundaries, one within which building is strictly prohibited and the other in which only an abbreviated site plan review is triggered, and the wording in the law should be precise on that point, say down in Section 5.3 G1, and the two different shades should be used on the map. Again, I find this whole course objectionable, but if you must persist and at least make it clear to the homeowner just what he is up against. Thanks. And I just want to add to that. I would like to, I would like to see in the, in the report or someplace where homeowners have access to it, the exact state legal requirements as opposed to just recommendations for where these buffers are associated with. In other words, there are certain places to be continued, I hope.
And I’ll just remind everybody that if you, if four minutes is not sufficient for you, if we do have time for a second round of hearings from people, you’ll have another four minutes. But also a reminder that written comments to the zoning commission submitted through the town clerk are certainly invited and welcome and appreciated. Next on the list is a name that’s crossed out, but I don’t know who crossed it out, so I just want to be sure that this person does not want to speak. Rebecca Phillips.
Yeah.
Would you like to speak?
Well, it’s difficult for me to stand up there at the microphone.
Let me ask if we can.
Can you hear me? I can’t hear you.
Yeah, let me ask, can the microphone be moved over to her?
No, no, no. This is not my four minutes.
No, not this part, but, oh. Take that.
Hold it and speak. Your turn, correct.
Oh. Tell me it was heavy.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I’m kind of probably going over what Pete was questioning. I noticed on the overlay map, my entire residence, property, whatever I have, everything I have is on an overlay, and that basically says, I can’t do diddly squat on it. I can’t. I mean, basically, if I want to sell the place, the bank isn’t going to loan anybody any money with that kind of hindrance on it. The other thing is, how many houses are in the overlay in the town of Caroline? And how is, when I went with FEMA, they said I’m not in a flood zone. The D.C. says I’m not, so where, who places did this all come up? I mean, from what I’ve read, that it’s 100 feet from the shoreline or edge of the creek, and my house is a long way, more than 100 feet from the creek, and so I don’t know where this formula or decision-making has come from. I’m done.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Next on the list, but again crossed out, is Jo Wiki. Would Jo, no? Okay. Next on the list is Susan Holland.
Good evening. I’m Susan Holland, and I work for Historic Ithaca, and I’m the director, and I live in the town of Caroline. My work, though, is throughout Tompkins County, so I really, I commend the town, the zoning commission, and all the residents for getting involved in the zoning discussion. It’s really hard work. My day job is in historic preservation, which is often related to zoning, helping to keep what is good about a community and for the community good. I’ve advocated for many historic resources in my 30-year career, and I’ve encountered zoning too many times to count. I worked in Albany before coming to Caroline and Ithaca. The new zoning code really can help with keeping the character. I think we can all agree that we like the rural nature here, the bucolic feel, and the landscapes that surround us. I’m seeing at least 50 cases, probably more, where a developer, an out-of-town builder, an outside entity decides that they would like to come to your community, neighborhood or your spaces, and do what they would like, and their motive, I hate to say, is often profit. You, as a longtime resident and a property owner, really don’t think it’s great, so zoning can really help everyone achieve a mutually agreeable goal by working together. Codes shouldn’t be punitive but prescriptive and helpful. Believe it or not, one thing that preservationists do is a vision for the future and to keep historic resources, neighborhoods intact, landscapes that everyone can enjoy, basically what’s good where you live. That’s what zoning, I hope, will do for the town of Caroline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Next is R.C. Quick.
I stand before you, a 75-year-old man, a fifth-generation landowner, former resident, and a person who sees zoning in the town of Caroline as not needed and what will prove costly to all. Costly not only in dollars, but in quality of life and more and more dissension. I have been emotionally, intellectually, and financially invested in this for over a year. The first no-zoning signs were partially funded by me. I have made enemies. I have made friends. That is the nature of conflict. We are now at a point of dotting i’s and crossing t’s. There is an air of inevitability that zoning will become law later this year. Three people who own a total of 53 acres will make zoning a law in our town. If these three people own 1% of the land in Caroline, they would own 357.5 acres. Do the math. It makes little sense to me. These three people, after passing zoning, will hear Caroline residents at the ballot box later this year. A new board that is more representative of the people will be elected and will repeal zoning in 2024. Then our town can begin to heal. I look forward to it. Many of you know that I am an alcoholic and attribute my 40-year sobriety in large part to being able to work the land that has been in my family since 1864. I have said before that the zoning initiative feels as if my chest is being ripped open and a part of my whole, a part of my heart and a piece of my soul are being taken from me. I still feel that way. I stand here tonight with a clear conscience. My work over the past year is what the generations before me would have wanted and what they would have done. These are the people the chair of the zoning commission collectively referred to when she said, “I’m sick and tired of hearing about your grandparents. Piss on them.” That day, and those comments are seared in my memory. It was and is shameful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Next on the list is Pam Austin.
So most of my questions are the same that Becky had and also Pete, and I cannot stress to you how important it is that people understand, and I understand what you’re trying to shoot for with this overlay. I’ve lived on the wetland my whole life and all of my neighborhood. I’m up in East Caroline, and you can see that my residents totally covered my neighbors. They have beautiful fields. They have, we are far away from the wetland. We certainly know everything about the wetland. When you live on the wetland all your life, you learn to respect it, so I’m kind of thinking that maybe you’ve overshot a little bit and don’t quite figure out, maybe you should figure out that, you know, we’re not understanding that. We don’t know why, and I have multiple properties, too, and I’m also worried about what this is going to do to affect my capability of being able to offer lower-income housing. I am one of the few, very few landlords that take Section 8, and it’s critical that I totally understand it and that the people that I am responsible for understand it when I have to raise rent. I’d also like to understand why there is no commercial zoning on West Slaterville. Seems to me my whole life there’s been commercial business there, and now all of a sudden, we have no commercial business. It’s just residential. And if you could make that clear to us, I think that would help a lot, and if you could please think that, you know, not everyone, people want to come to Caroline, they want to live here. Multiple families have come here, they’ve rented from me, they are now reputable homeowners, and I was able to do that. My husband and I have had many, many, many properties that we have bought in the town of Caroline. Some we have resold, but we have tried to make as nice as possible, and during this time, when people that are living in my rental units can’t afford to buy fuel and propane and groceries, and they are seeing all of this and things moving fast, and people saying they are afraid, and they should not be afraid, and I certainly hope that you will address that and think of that. And I really want to know mostly, too, why commercial is not on West Slaterville. I just cannot understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Next speaker is Janet Nash.
The one thing that I would like to know is why is, in the zoning law, there’s no definition for family? There’s multifamily, single-family, two-family, one-family, family dwellings, other family members, but there is no definition whatsoever in there that I could see for what a family is, and that’s all different kinds of categories today. It’s not as simple as it used to be. There was 75 mentions that family was in the zoning on 135 pages, so if zoning is passed, we need to know what the meaning of family is in the zoning law. The other thing that I would like to talk to you about is your meeting last week, and I realize that you’re giving people an extra four minutes if there’s time left, but last week, it was really an embarrassment of how it was taking place. The public hearing with the New York State Adopting Zoning for the First Time booklet states it provides an opportunity for public to be heard before government action is taken when you have a hearing. The comments received at the hearing could provide the commission with additional information. If necessary, the commission can limit the time for a speaker, which you did, to make his or her initial comments, and if requested, grant the speaker extra time. At the end of that, there was an hour and 20 minutes left. It was requested that that hour and 20 minutes be used for additional questions. It was shut down. It was also said that you could stare at the people on the board, the commission, excuse me, for an hour and 20 minutes, when that could have been used for good use. I really feel, other than Bruce Murray questioning if that was legal to do that, I think it was another misuse of power and control. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Next speaker is Mary Alice Kobler.
My name is Mary Alice Kobler. Thank you all for listening to my thoughts and comments on the proposed Caroline zoning law. I think that fear is the driving force for both those in favor of zoning and those who are against zoning. Fear makes a terrible master. It is essential to not fall victim to fearmongers. I wish everyone in Caroline was listening as well as the members of our zoning commission and our town board have been. All the brouhaha over the zoning is casting a smokescreen that obscures all the great things that are volunteers and town board are accomplishing through hard work and cooperation, work that has been done on behalf of all of us. Real progress is being made on hard-to-solve issues such as broadband accessibility for everyone, upgrading our highway facilities, emergency management services, agriculture and farmland protection planning. We are now saving thousands of taxpayer dollars by owning our own streetlights, and that, my friends, took years to achieve. I have been staying tuned to the zoning commission work for nearly two years. Why? Because it scared me. I was worried that my wonderful neighbors who run a rather large business from their property would be negatively affected. I am assured now that the proposed zoning law will not negatively affect them, just as I feel assured that it won’t negatively affect our smaller cottage industry folks. I really want to keep buying my eggs and produce from roadside farm stands, and I am assured that this is not threatened by zoning. I can still paint my house fuchsia with the lime-green stripes if I want, and you can too. Our proposed zoning law is not like homeowners’ association laws. Those who tell you that this change in governance is the death knell for these businesses, the future of growing small businesses, or our current way of life are simply wrong and have not in good faith kept up with the zoning commission’s work or the updated draft of the proposed law. Is it fear of change? We all know things are changing. There isn’t enough sand to sink our heads into to pretend things are not changing. The next 100 years are certainly not going to look like the last 100 years. Zoning will give us a chance to fight off extractive industry and those who want to capitalize on an ill-defended town. We need to have the law on our side. I did not inherit my land, and our family has only been here for 30 years. It took years and years of hard work to be able to buy our land, and it takes endless hours of toil to feed our family from our labors. We love and respect our neighbors. My son earned a Bronze Star and two Purple Hearts. When asked why he had joined the military, he responded by saying, “Oh, I just wanted to make sure my mom could always afford her attitude.” He said that in good humor, but it was not a joke. I do not, will not be governed by fear or bullies. I am a firm believer in government by and for the people. We have a town board that won in the last election by a long country mile. My vote is as important and counts as much as everyone else, and I am for a limited, fair, responsible zoning law. Our zoning committee members have been bullied and threatened, and yet they have persevered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kobler. I’ll note that there are a number of empty seats up here. If any of you who are standing would like seats, please come on up. Please feel free.
I only buy on Wednesdays, it’s always safe.
Can you put my name down on your list?
You can sign in at that table over there, just because you’ll be in the proper order that way. Again, I’ll just note, for people who are standing, there are seats here if you’d like to take them. Okay, our next speaker is Jonathan Comstock.
So, good evening. I’m Jonathan Comstock, and my wife and I have lived in the town of Caroline since 1993. We love this town dearly for its beauty, its strong spirit, and its diversity. I support fair and equitable zoning, and I don’t accept the assertion that this is a class war. Certainly, there are large and passionate differences of opinion about this issue, but throughout Caroline, all kinds of homes, I see my favorite yard sign, which says, “Caroline is kind,” and I believe this is true. I hope we can all continue to believe it as we go through this process together. I have tremendous respect for the families that have lived on this land for generations. I do not want this zoning law to be a hindrance or a harm to them. One of my least favorite signs is the one that declares, “There is a war in this valley, and it’s time to pick sides.” I think this is a quote taken from the TV series Yellowstone, and if so, I hope the authors of the sign watched the climax of season four, when pre-existing zoning is the legal tool that saves the Yellowstone Ranch from hostile takeover by market equities. So TV is just TV. We’re living our lives here, but the key issue is that zoning can’t solve problems that have already happened. They can only, it is forward-looking. It is meant to give the town some control over powerful outside interests and preserve what we love. Caroline Caroline, with or without zoning, cannot remain what it has been for the last 30 years I've lived here, or the multi-generational time spans that many Caroline families can be proud of. This proposed law is an attempt to get ahead of that change and make sure it's positive. I also see yard signs that say, "Zoning promotes racism and economic inequality." And looking at those yard signs, I am impressed that we all share some very strong values. I agree that this can and has happened in many places, but I don't believe this zoning law will do that. I think many members of the zoning commission and town board would rather cut out their own livers than create a legal framework to encourage inequality. When I look at the proposed zoning law, I am impressed that there are few restrictions on residential or small business interests, and that equal protections and modest restrictions apply throughout the town. I call upon the zoning commission to continue its openness and vigilance in defining the final proposed law. I've now attended several public meetings on zoning. I've been impressed by both opponents and supporters. Contrary to some of the rhetoric, the zoning commission has operated with great transparency and a strong desire to formulate rules that are a best fit for Caroline. All of their meetings are available, as written minutes, and even videos. There have been many alterations between draft one and two of the law that have incorporated the community's feedback. This can be most specific if they hear specifics, most effective if they hear specifics about particular rules rather than generalities. I hope that there will be a fair, equitable, and modest zoning law passed, working for everyone, without creating unnecessary restrictions. I hope the zoning commission hears constructive feedback that can help them to achieve this. I thank the zoning commission for their thousands of hours of selfless volunteer service to protect our town, and I also thank the many Caroline residents of all walks of life who have contributed constructive feedback to this process. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Next on the list is Chris Scriber.
I'm putting my notes away. Let me introduce myself. My name is Christine Scriber. I am the wife of Richard Scriber. Very few people here know me, but if you have anything to do with the fire company, you remember Richard. He's the one who provided the jaws of life through his employment through IBM. His parents brought him to Caroline when he was five. Dr. Mary treated him for polio. My husband is not well. Only the Lord knows which one of us will go first. If he goes first, I'm going to live with my kids in South Carolina. But I love Caroline. For almost 23 years, it has been my home. I love it. And in spite of the fact that I don't stray far from my home, I take care of that perennial garden that's hidden behind that ugly plastic fence. Y'all come. I'd love to have people look at my flowers and share them with me. But I put away my notes because it's a ditto, almost exactly, of what Mr. Quick had to say. I do want to say one additional thing to the zoning board. I slogged through it in spite of the fact that I have very bad eyes. I read very slowly. My eyes don't work together. I have to go like this, or go like this, to read clearly. But I did slog through it. You did something good. You said there won't be any adult stores ever. I like that. The rest of it, a lot of it, is just redundancy of federal and state laws. We already know this stuff. I really think that you could make the good part into a one- or two-paragraph law and trash the rest.
Thank you, Ms. Scriber. The next name on the list, again, it's crossed out, and I can't quite make out the writing, and I'm sure this is not it, but I'm going to give it a try. David Bowie. Is there a David B. somewhere, B. something? Who wants to speak? Okay, I guess not. Okay, could somebody bring me the next sheet?
All right, I'm going to actually read parts of a rebuttal authored by Sandra Zwerger to a recent Cornell Review piece. "Zoning has a deep history of racism, segregation, classism, and preventing affordable housing for disadvantaged people. Despite suggestions by others, zoning in Caroline is not affiliated with any political party. I, Sandra, am a lifelong Democrat fighting a town board predominantly Democratic. There are many other Democrats and Republicans protesting zoning, too. Simply put, we agree collectively, regardless of political ideology, that everyone should have a fair chance at a good life. The recent U.S. Census indicates a population of approximately 3,200 people here. We are a diverse group of humans and cherish our individualism. No one should think of us as some monolithic group. Our community, above all else, is tolerant and truly cares about each other, a rare find in the world today. Zoning would change everything. Zoning has a deep underbelly of promoting racism, segregation, classism, and preventing affordable housing. Any research on zoning will show you the horrific results. Take the time to read about its historical background and how it has discriminated against impoverished people since its inception." I have included a link here to an article written, I think on February 23rd, in the New York Times. "The era of shutting others out of New York suburbs is ending." Some quotes from this article are as follows. One, "These zoning laws are among the most restrictive in the country. They severely limit the state's housing supply, making the entire region less affordable, and they are rooted in Jim Crow." Two, "The Fair Housing Act of 1968 made racial discrimination in housing illegal, but communities were still allowed to enact and maintain zoning laws that had the same effect." Three, "As a result, the tighter zoning laws became associated nationally with increased racial segregation as well as diminished housing supply." Four, "Ms. Hochul's housing proposal takes political courage in New York State, a northern state whose zoning laws largely escaped the reach of the civil rights movement." Those are quotes from the New York Times. Unfortunately, a mostly elite group of town of Caroline, board, and zoning committee members thinks differently. This includes professors and alumnus of the Cornell community, and despite being intellectuals, they seem to lack the sensitivity or caring to appreciate or understand disadvantaged residents. The board members completely ignore the devastating consequences of the impact of zoning and the racial discrimination associated with it. Although the board members talk about responsible zoning, there is no such thing. This is merely a way to distance themselves from the reality of what they are enacting, something to make them feel better, a salve for their unprincipled souls. Whether it is in a city or a small rural community, the outcome is always the same. Impoverished people are hurt, and the community suffers. We will not continue to support a majority group of elite board members who live a privileged life with a rich salary, pensions, health care, and the luxury of home ownership who fail to grasp how others live. In our little rural town of Caroline, now is the time to play our small part to rectify our country's disgraceful past. We must and will stand up to them." That's the end of Sandra's piece. My thoughts. You all claim this proposal will not hurt the disadvantaged, and you've taken your time to protect that. How can it not hurt the disadvantaged? How? You say that there's a bigger demand to move into Caroline. Then you reduce the supply of residential and commercial lots that are available, either by making it a three-acre or three-acre average, however you want to dissect it. It's less lots for a bigger demand. More demand plus less supply equals higher cost. You are protecting this space, this space we call home, for the most privileged in our community, to enjoy at the expense of the less privileged, exactly what all of those articles talk about with zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Thank you, Mr. Morse. Next on the list is Charles and Shaquita Baylor. Crossed out, but let me know if you want to speak. Is Charles or Shaquita Baylor? No? Next on the list is Kim Wetzel.
Many of you know me as a longtime resident of the town of Caroline, businessperson. And if your toilets ever regurgitated its contents up on your bathroom floor, you probably know me as the owner of Gaggle Company. I have four businesses, which are headquartered in the town of Caroline. It's now down to three sold one. I have, I'm a significant landowner in the town of Caroline for somebody that's not actively engaged in agriculture. And this figures into my retirement, if someday I can retire. And these restrictions that the town is proposing are going to very much hurt what I might like to do with my property. And to the end of someday maybe selling some of my property, I've strategically built county-approved septic systems on particular parts of my land. And it doesn't fit into what they are proposing. So, you know, I think that they're not looking at a lot of the problems that the town has had. You know, they talk about this is going to be great control. We've had junk and cars and stuff like that in the town forever, and they have not done anything for all these years, significant, to clean up some of that stuff. So I really don't have a warm, fuzzy feeling about how they're going to administer this zoning when they get done cramming it through. They've taken advantage of this situation where people can't have handy, open meetings. They've done just exactly to the letter what they have to do. If you ask a question of the board members, chances are they won't give you an answer. And so what I want to do is I want to bring to some of the residents, at least you're concerned, whether you be for it or against it, you're here, you're participating, that's a good thing. I only wish that our town board would give a little more back and forth and participate more than just hiding behind your regulations, say, "Well, we can't this, we can't that." So to people that are working, whether you're for zoning or against zoning, you know, keep at it. But I think the town board, with the exception of a quarter of it, maybe a third, is just adamant, doesn't want it. I've got mine, and to heck with everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. I'll just take this opportunity to remind everybody that there's lots of information on the zoning commission website, including answers, clear long answers to 215 or so questions the commission received. I'd like to call the next speaker, Jakim Halton.
I first and foremost want to give honor to the original people of this land, the original zoning board, the Haudenosaunee. The native people obviously did it in a good way and cared about the land and made sure that the water was clean. And by the time that water got to Kewa Lake, it was well clean. So we got some things to work on as humans right now. I will say that. What I don't know is if zoning is the way to make that happen. Zoning is an external entity, which basically, the young man who spoke before was talking about racism. It's called redlining, when you basically make decisions on where people can live and where they can't. If you go down to Ithaca, you have West Village, a lot of people of color live in that area, Section 8 housing. So you start making decisions for the people, and those entities aren't made by the local community. I don't think local people wanted Walmart or McDonald's to come to the community. Those are external enforcements that start to be said that a community that has many people has to have this kind of corporate sector, right? So zoning is the part which creates that. So you have an external entity making decisions for the people. The fact that we are divided and conquered is why we even are considering the zoning. We have to be in better communication with each other. What are our farming practices? Are we using Monsanto or stuff that's getting into the water supply that's polluting? If that's happening, we don't need zoning to tell us not to do that. We need to make those decisions for ourselves and be at the table of conversation. And if you're the board, bring that conversation forward so that we can be more connected with each other instead of divided and conquered. So zoning, for me, is an opportunity for us to say, "Do we need an external entity to make decisions for us? Or are we going to come together as a people and say, 'We care about that lake, we care about that river, we care about this land,' and we're going to come together?" Though we might be different, sexual orientations, race, gender, whatever it is, we have different walks of life, but we have to come together to work together, or else external entities are going to solve our divided and conquered problems for us, because we don't believe we have the capacity to do it for ourselves, by ourselves. Again, Skano, for the Haudenosaunee and the people that have been here before, I carry that spirit forward to hopefully we can move forward generations, seven generations from now, to have our own land, food access, growing food for each other, setting up marketplaces where we can access for each other, by each other, protecting the lake, protecting each other. We don't need 5G cell phones, technology to tell us what to do. We are human, we're breathing, sun, moon, earth, we're connected. That's why I love this land, Brooktondale, Caroline, because when I come here, I connect to the earth. When I was in the city of Ithaca, I faced racism. I come out here, those trees tell me, "I don't care what you look like. I love you." I plant that seed, it grows. This is Caroline, this is Brooktondale, we work together. Skano.
Thank you, Mr. Halton. Next speaker is John Snow. John Snow.
Hello, I'm John Snow. I run a farm on Buffalo Road. It's been in my family several generations. I'm here tonight to talk to you about my concerns involving these proposed zoning laws and how they will affect agriculture. At the start of this document, it is said the purpose of zoning, it is said purposes of zoning are to foster and preserve farming and other business activities, businesses and activities associated with agriculture. The farming community in this town is a mix of multi-generational families and people who are new to this occupation, our landlords, friends, and the people who buy our produce. All of us have a vested interest in preserving our natural resources. I grow cover crops, keep lots of farmland and hay, and follow a crop rotation schedule that benefits our local ecosystem. Many others do the same thing. We are what takes care of the land, not some legal paperwork that says how to take care of the town. When I read about guidelines suggesting retaining and reuse existing old farm roads and country lanes rather than construct new roads or driveways to the maximum extent possible, I wonder, how far removed is the author from ag? If a farmer needs to do this sort of work to their property, it is for good reason. One of them is safety. Modern machinery is much larger than what my grandfather used. My tractor has about seven foot more of nose on it than what he used. Because of this, I don't use the same access points to field. This is because blind spots for oncoming traffic, pushing some hedge roads back would help with visibility going on and off the road for me and oncoming traffic. Oh, wait. More on page 62. Preserve hedge roads and stone walls to maximum extent practical. There are many reasons to push hedge roads back. Safety, as just mentioned, clearing diseased trees so other trees stay healthy, and keeping fields open to the sun so crops can grow better. New buildings should take into consideration its rural surroundings and take advantage of this by maintaining open views and spaces. Buildings should be in proportion, proportion consistent in scale and characteristic to their rural nature and natural setting. More micromanagement. So what does this mean? Should all barns have to have a gambrel roof and be red in color, just like the ones built in 1890? Well, this multi-floored, large barn works well for my cattle and crop operation. Well, this multi-floored, large barn works well for my cattle and, cattle and crop operation. It would not be well-suited for other types of farming. Why does paperwork need to come from our government dictating how buildings should look and be situated? The house, these housing authority-type rules forget the laws of nature in this town. Where springs are, how the snow drifts in the winter, let the property owner decide what is best for their operation, not some document written in a concrete jungle. As I, as I read zoning's goal to preserve and protect agriculture, I'm insulted. The people pushing this have no clue about agriculture. The farming community in this town is very close-knit. I value my fellow farmers, landlords, and the people who are interested in what we do. The best way to help us out is to quit talking about zoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. The next speaker is Bruno Schickel.
Am I correct that there's four minutes?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, thank you. So let me begin by saying that I know the zoning commission and the town board considers themselves public servants, which you should be. And I think that if you drive around Caroline, and if you really take some time to drive on the back roads and look around, you see a lot of people that are struggling. There's, there's a lot of poverty in this town, there's a lot of vulnerable people in this town, and there's people that are struggling, just trying to get by, day after day. So my question to you as public servants, is your plan helping? Is this plan designed to help relieve the struggle and help the vulnerable? There's 146 pages. Will it make life easier? Will it help people prosper? Will it ease their struggle? Or will it add to their struggle? Will it bring on frustration? Will it be harder for them to succeed? Harder or impossible for them to start businesses? And will it make, ask yourself this question, will it make living here in Caroline less expensive? Currently, if you look at where we are right now, currently, there's no zoning. There's a subdivision review process that sweeps up a number of projects for some subdivision review. But essentially, everything is allowed right now out of right, or as of right, with, with this subdivision review for a few things. So let's look at your plan. If you take the chart, the use chart, and I've gone over it very carefully, you got all of these hamlets and then the ag over, ag area. You have, and I counted up all the Xs, which means not allowed under any circumstance. This is a use that's not allowed under any circumstances. There's 169 Xs. Plus, anything that's undefined, that you haven't defined in a use, then your definitions is also prohibited. So you have a whole category of a special use permit. There's 100 of those, locations requiring special use permit. Site plan review, whether it's abbreviated or more advanced, there's 169. That totals, the major impact of this from where we are now is there's 460 uses that currently essentially have no review and are allowed out of right. And you are putting that burden on 100, of 430 different uses. There are only, the Ps stand for permitted use, there's only 208 of those. So there's twice as many things that are prohibited, require a special use permit, or require some than not. So I'll go back to the question, are you being good public servants? Are you helping or are you hurting? And my question is, where is your compassion for your neighbor?
Thank you, Mr. Schickel. Next speaker is Karina Farsman.
I'm going to tell the same story I told a year ago about my dealing with the zoning board in Danby. I grew up here in Sladeville, and after I graduated high school, my parents moved to Danby, and I left to go to New York City for college. And when I moved back to Ithaca, I moved to Danby to be close to my parents. They were a central part of raising my son as a single parent, and I became attached to that community as my son went through school. In 2020, my parents offered to give me a parcel of their land to build a house or manufactured home so I could start the process of going through the planning and zoning boards in Danby to get permission to first have the parcel of lands be separated and to have a house placed where I wanted it. I worked in a construction company at the time, and my coworker, the designer, did a CAD design for the parcel of land that we wanted to separate and where I wanted to put my house. I had the paper, had to file the paperwork and be able to meet with the zoning board and pay $125 fee. They already could see that it was not going to meet some of the zoning requirements, such as the 200 feet of road frontage and the easement on either side of the property lines that would be the new property line to my parents' property and their neighbor's property line. They said to take it to the planning board and see if it would pass there. And then I would have to come back to the zoning board to find if they approved it again. They also said that I should get a land survey to survey the land that I wanted parceled off, which would have cost another $900 to get it surveyed without even knowing if it would pass either zoning or planning boards. I had to meet with the planning board, I had to fill out more paperwork and pay a $75 fee. They seemed to be okay with it, but they did not know the specific zoning laws it would have to meet, and they approved it to go back to the zoning board. But that I would have to apply for variances of the zoning restrictions. So when I went back to the zoning board, I had a new drawing made up of something that would hopefully be closer to meeting their zoning restrictions. But I still had less than 200 feet of road frontage and 30 feet on either side of the house instead of 50 feet. We placed the well and septic where it would need to go and had the property lines drawn up to match my parents' original survey. The reason I needed the house placed where it was was because it was the largest part of the land, or the largest parcel of land would be way back from the road. And they suggested I put it back there, which would have been an extra, like, 600 feet of driveway and electric run. And they decided to, of course, not pass it. They said if they gave me variants, let this variant slide, then they would have to let other people slide on these variances. And so when I didn't meet any of the acre, or the requirements, I ended up going into the buying process and decided to buy a house here in Caroline. So I bought a house in August of 2021 to find out that there was zoning in the process that would now be putting restrictions. I heard you, that would be putting restrictions on my property.
I'm asking you to stop and abide by the courtesies that everybody else who has spoken has abided by, so thank you.
Not everybody stopped right at the four minutes. And I'm trying to get to my point where I moved to a place where I wouldn't be restricted by these same zoning laws as Danby. And now I'm going to be restricted again.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Holly McGee.
First thing I want to say is the Q and A is biased, put together by you people. You're for zoning, so of course you're going to sway every answer to make it look like zoning is good for the community, when really, it's not. I put something together to read. You continue to say that zoning would be a useful tool that would benefit the town. To me, zoning would only cater to a handful of residents, and this includes town board members, former board members, and their elite friends. Those same people are the ones with the "support responsible zoning" signs in their yards. When I see the few signs in this town, I must ponder, what does that even mean? What is responsible zoning? Then I look around town, and everywhere I look, it's spelled out in bold, red print. "Zoning is responsible for killing dreams." "Zoning is responsible for discrimination." "Zoning is responsible for segregation." "Zoning is responsible for pitting neighbors against neighbors." "Zoning is responsible for creating unwanted challenges." "Zoning is responsible for breaking the bank." "Zoning is responsible for unnecessary residential nitpicking." "Zoning is responsible for unwanted property infringement." "Zoning is responsible for water overlays, which devalue our property significantly." And the list goes on and on and on. "Zoning is also responsible for allowing certain groups of people to better themselves while stomping over others." I ask myself, what kind of people would want zoning for our town? Who would be pushing something this horrible on us? Well, the answer is right in front of me. The people that are going to benefit the most from zoning are the same people trying to implement it. The people that frown when they see a Dollar General trying to build too close to their homes. The people who don't like low-income neighbors. The people that reek of self-interest and self-worth. The ones that want to complain every time they hear a faint noise in the distance. The ones that complain of, complain of farm noises and animal smells. The ones that are bothered by campfire smoke or a pile of mulch. The ones that don't want to push, or the ones that do want to push the rednecks out of town because they are not the type of people worthy of their time. I'm sorry that we as a community don't fit your dreamland description of what you think the rural character should be. But I'm pretty sure our definition of rural character and your definition of rural character are completely different. And since there's no true definition of what rural character is, then why is it that you get to decide what the definition, definition means? Furthermore, if you want rural character, I'm pretty sure you're looking right at it. These people right here are what fits that description. And once you implement zoning, you are well aware that the increased fines and increased taxes brought on by zoning will push these folks right out of town. But I'm pretty sure we've already figured out that the real goal behind your responsible zoning and that, that is to implement it, control us, foreclose our properties and/or seize and arrest us, and then finally fine and burn it, burden us. When it comes to zoning, you already know the ramifications of it and plan on using it to benefit none other than yourselves. So please hear us today and do the right thing. We may not be like-minded or on the same socioeconomic status as you, but that's no reason to push us out of town. Maybe you should rephrase your definition of rural character to "the rural character of the elite." It's a bit more fitting, don't you think? In conclusion, let's not cater to a few resident, resident crybabies who dislike their neighbors, but rather, let's work together on things that the town truly needs, such as working internet, cell service, ambulance, and recreational activities for kids and teens. Try working with us, not against us. Teamwork makes the dream work. No zoning needed, no zoning wanted. For everyone here tonight and those on Zoom, it's time to take back Caroline 2023. Let's vote them out.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Next speaker is Tanya Van Kemp. Thank you.
I gave them a map of my property with some details. You guys asked for specifics last week, so here it is. Under Article 4 of the Schedule of Uses, there are a number of things that are categorized as prohibited except as home occupation. Many of those uses are not possible to perform in the limited context of a home occupation. So read that as prohibited, or needing to meet extensive requirements of a site plan review. There has been discussion of needing access to food in Caroline, but bakeries, commercial kitchens, and food and beverage would all meet these hurdles. Outdoor recreation facilities are either an X or a special use permit, despite lack of activities for youth being a concern. Who is to say that a review board wouldn't let their personal biases prevent a skate park, frisbee golf course, or paintball facility? Also, what do you all guys have against campgrounds? An even bigger issue under Section 4.3 is the density and average lot sizes. You heard that the people were opposed to minimum lot sizes, so changed the wording to instead create a maximum development density in agriculture land. It is essentially the same thing with different phrasing. If fictional farmer Frank wants to put 10 little houses on half acres on his 20-acre lot for his 10 kids, then he should be able to. Let's get to the picture I handed you. That is my property. You can just barely see the almost two-foot-wide stream that wraps around it. I am a steward of this stream and clear deadfall that blocks flowage, as well as replanting native species on the banks to prevent erosion. The stream is nestled between two embankments with a wide enclosed basin just outside the property line that contains the water from snowmelt and heavy rains. It would take a flood of biblical proportions for it to overflow into my yard. Yet I'm entirely in the water resource overlay. The yellow lines are my approximate boundaries. As you can see, my house, barn, and sheds are nearly 25% of my property is developed. You can also see that my house lays less than 50 feet from the riparian buffer edge and that my barn is directly next to it. Between the percentage of developed land and the proximity to the riparian buffer and being entirely in the resource overlay, can you honestly tell me that if I were want to, want to build a small addition to my house marked on that picture for you, I wouldn't be met with a ton of bureaucracy and fees only to fruitlessly appeal for a variance that I will never get, just like my friend Karina Fardman experienced in Danby? Additionally, why should my neighbors not be allowed to have what I already have? My barn, my sheds, nearly 25, possibly more percent development. Section 6.5.15, Conservation Development, specifically Section K. In your effort to create public use land, you are literally forcing conservation easements and HOAs. The last time I checked, HOAs were one of the most effective tools of neighbors policing neighbors, and it is a certain type of person that is willing to live under HOA guidelines. The big developers that you are so afraid of will comply with these strictures. They will give you your HOAs and your conservation easements, which will create little suburban neighborhoods representing the sprawl and lancing that we all live here to avoid. It does nothing to stop them from coming in, but will attract a much different type of resident. HOAs are the last thing we need in Caroline. There's so much more that I've highlighted in the draft that I actually read this week, but not enough time to cover my speaking time. This zoning proposal, under a thinly veiled guise of conservation, is the type of pretentious elitist nimbyism that resulted in segregationist zoning in the early days of zoning. Except that in Caroline, it will disproportionately impact low-income people and the farmers that it purports to protect. This proposal doesn't do anything that the DEC, Townes County, and State Building Codes don't already do. It is predicated upon fears of hypotheticals that would most likely never transpire in a township with no city water and sewer. It is a transport proposal at forcing created public use on lands that are currently private.
Thank you, Ms. Van Kemp.
And at Emily's Adam's suggestion, I created Cliff Notes that I'm going to provide you with as well.
Thank you very much, your time's up. The next speaker is Julie Sorrell.
Well, when I came here tonight, I really didn't intend to say anything, but there's so much about this notion of zoning and why it's being put into effect that concerns me. One person told me, this was a Facebook discussion, discussing how many people in Caroline actually wanted zoning. And I said, "Well, you can see with all the no zoning signs that the vast majority of people in Caroline don't want zoning." And their response was, "Well, the people who want zoning, they're afraid to put their signs out because they're afraid of retaliation. They're afraid of what other people might do." And my response to that person was, "I understand that. There is, in fact, strength in numbers." Also, in regard to the zoning and what you want to do with it, I wonder why most of Sladeville Road is suddenly in the hamlet of Beesmer. My house is now in the hamlet of Beesmer. It's one of the most restrictive hamlets. I wonder about that, because clearly, Sladeville Road has been always a commercial center. It's where most of the businesses are located. And yet, for some reason, it is now one of the most restrictive. I wonder if there was special interest involved in that decision. I expect that commercial things would happen, and when the Dollar General came in, it was literally going to be located one-tenth of a mile from my house. I didn't have a problem with that. I wasn't excited about looking at it, but it wasn't going to hurt anything, and a lot of people would benefit from the Dollar General. It's a commercial zone. What was I expecting when I bought the house? My other problem with the zoning process is the overlay, which everybody has a problem with. It doesn't make sense to me to take something that is already regulated by multiple entities and feel that somehow you have the right and some extra reason to add extra precautions to it and enlarge it. It doesn't make sense, these notions of, "Oh, well, we're going to make it bigger," and it doesn't necessarily mean that that's all included. We're just making it so it has to be, have a special use, whatever. I don't have my words right, but it has to come before the board. That just adds extra cost to whoever has that kind of a property and is in those areas. Extra unnecessary cost to do anything because you felt it was necessary to add to what was already in place. It's not necessary. If you look at my house, almost my entire property, thank you, is in the overlay. And while a large part of it should be in the overlay, everything to the right of my driveway is reasonable to be in the overlay. Everything to the left of my driveway is on a hill. There's no way it's wet, and yet it's all in the overlay. Makes no sense, and I'm against this.
The next speaker is Chad Tibbles.
I'm just a local guy. Raised my kids here, got a small business. I got really nothing in notes, but I'm just coming up here to support all the people that came out, and what they're saying is true. Listen to us, please. We live here for reasons, we raise our families, you do too, but we came here for a reason. This place is awesome. Keep it that way. There's nothing bad going on here. You can't, you haven't changed a lot of things that should be changed, so what's going to change this? Come on. We all love this place. Let's keep it great. It is great. We don't need this change. I support all these people that came up here. They're awesome. Even the people that didn't say anything, they want to say stuff. They're here, just showing their numbers. Consider us, all of us, come on. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbles. The next speaker is Cindy Kishel? Kishel?
Kennel.
Kennel, sorry.
I just have a couple of quick things. I have spoken several times, not that it has made much difference. First of all, to the commission, you were sent to do a job, and I understand that. I wish the job had been, "Please research and see if," versus, "We need this, so figure out how." That might have been a little more palatable to people. One of the other discussions in one of the meetings was about what's happening at the state level. So I really, I guess I want to emphasize, if we're loving moratoriums, then let's put a moratorium on installing zoning. There are four bills, okay? There are, there are four bills currently at the state, all addressing zoning. Now, we're going to go through all of this, we're going to be as divided and angry, and all of it's going to be for not, because all of these are talking about rolling back zonings, rolling back restrictions, in fact, rolling back the authority of the local laws. So I think we should, we haven't had it in 200 years. I'm not sure May of this year, something is going to happen that we have to have it done by. So I'm really going to ask to, let's just take a breath and see if we can't get it done. For whatever the issues are, none of us see, you know, any big commercial, anything coming in, but if there was an issue, we have taken what might have been a very fine line and painted it with a really broad brush. And that is not what we should be doing to our residents, to our people. My other comment, and I made the other night, and I will continue to make for 200 years that haven't been zoning, if all of the ancestors before had thought like you thought today, none of us would have this prejudice of living here. And I want you to think about that. You couldn't live, most of us couldn't live. You're out in farmland. If they had made these kind of rules, none of us, or very few of us, maybe the generational farmers, wouldn't have the privilege of being here and talking to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennel. Could the gentleman in the red jacket tell me if there's any names on that sign-in sheet? Any more names?
Not yet.
Okay. So given there are no names over there, I'm going to go through in order the lists that we had, the three pages of lists, and I'll read the names, and if you'd like to speak for another four minutes, you're certainly welcome to do so, or you could decline that opportunity. But if anybody is interested in speaking who has not yet had a chance to speak, please put your name on the list, and if a name appears, that name gets priority over second-round speakers. So just to be clear, we're trying to give priority for people who have not yet had a chance to speak and would like to speak, but if there are no such people, we'll move forward with the second round of asking people for another four, up to four minutes of comments. Okay? So going back to the first speaker, Cal Snow. Okay, declined. Next speaker is Pete Hoyt.
Thank you. I've got to be the least eloquent person in this room. You guys are all great. Even you guys who don't agree with me, you're still much better at this than I am. Pardon me? No. But I do have a, I want to finish up, though, on the water overlay stuff, and I appreciate the opportunity to kind of run the old grand finale here. So picking up where we left off, I was starting to say that I think it would be helpful, beneficial, if somehow your report could distinguish between those issues involving wetlands and streams that are mandated by the state of New York, or the, I'm not sure who mandates that on the federal level, might be the Army Corps, FEMA, I'm not sure. If those things that were, in fact, mandated out of local hands were itemized, identified, so they could be distinguished from the discretionary regulations that you guys are writing into the zoning law, for one thing, it would clarify any arguments or discussions, no sense wasting time discussions that we can't do anything about legally. And I think it would also just kind of help everybody to understand where you're coming from, and maybe help you all understand where we are coming from. And the last point that I want to make is that much more pushback can be expected on these water resource overlays. You know, people are still fired up about this. I worked on it a bunch with you guys back in November, and I will say that Bill has always been very cooperative in addressing my questions, and to some extent, you guys acted on some of the concerns that I and others raised, and I acknowledge that, and I appreciate it. Naturally, I'd like more. Either the town board will have to deal after you are disbanded, deal with these water resource questions, or you can address them now. And I realize it would take more time if you all addressed them now. I don't think that this is the end of the discussion, just once the zoning commission is disbanded. I think it will persist, it will continue, and we all decide whether you want to take it up, keep on working on it. I've made a few suggestions tonight about how to continue to maybe make it a little more clear to people. So I leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
Found my paper clip.
If anybody finds the pen that was missing from the table, that'd be nice, too. Next speaker is Rebecca Phillips.
All I got to say is I appreciate all those that spoke in regards to not, no zoning. You said a lot of what I wanted to say in a much better way, and I appreciate everybody's effort, and I thank you very much.
Do you want to read?
Oh, I spoke a lot.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Phillips. Next is Joe Wiki.
My name's Joe Wiki. I belong to Speedsville Fire Department, lived there since 1956. Been a member of the fire department for over 45 years. Love to thank you and your son for the service, but the reason I'm here is no zoning. There's never been a need for zoning. Everything is already covered as far as FEMA, DEC, whatever. I don't speak a lot because these people speak. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wiki. Next is Susan Holland.
Good, thank you.
Next is R.C. Quick.
Sure.
Thanks for allowing me to speak a little bit further. I would just like to recall the makeup of the zoning commission when this all started. I believe there were nine people, and a few dropped out. And we had asked the town supervisor, Mark Whitmer, "Why don't you replace the three that have dropped out?" Never happened, never even thought about it in my mind. So we went from nine to six. We are an agricultural town. Is there a farmer on the zoning commission? It's, this is all so wrong-headed. It's all backwards. I'm, I was talking to someone a while back, and I said to her, "I'm losing something." And we came to the conclusion that I, a fifth-generation landowner, am losing some of that deep love that I have for the town and my land and the citizens. Let's not do this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Next is Pam Austin.
I don't know. I guess what I want to say is that you people really need to think about what you're doing with this multifamily and with the apartments and with the building, and making it very costly for anyone to work on their properties. I'm not going to be able to, I fear that I'm not going to be able to provide, you know, the decent housing that I have been able to provide. I have 11 units, just like Mr. Schickel has many, and I'll get to you. If I wanted to open up my properties and sell them and build a place for like one, two, and three bedrooms, four, 11 units, I'm not going to be able to do that. Mr. Schickel, I apologize, but I trespassed, I took my horse. You have what, 168 people in your, in your, about units? More than that. I rode around that on my horse. It took me less than 30 minutes to get around there. All those people, they, they're there. They're living happy. It's causing a wonderful thing. My tenants are a wonderful thing, but if I want to build more for lower-income people, I'm not going to be able to do it at all. Maybe two, three, four family, well, sometimes that's not enough, and people might want bigger housing, so, and I don't want zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Next speaker is Janet Nash. Nope, okay. Next speaker is Mary Alice Kobler. Nope. Next speaker, Jonathan Comstock. Next speaker, Chris Scriber.
Okay, so the problem with putting your notes away is that you might forget something. I had a question. When I did get in slogging through the 100, I forget how many, 65 pages, what, no, 40, anyway, there was frequent reference to a zoning review board, and I think another Oh, yeah, I'm 76, so I got you beat a little bit, but anyway, and getting a little forgetful. But I know that we're more town employees listed there, and I haven't heard any comment about the cost, the wages. about the cost, the wages, the benefits, the hours worked, any of that stuff concerning more employees. As it's been referred to a couple of times already, that this is a, not a very populous, I think the census said 3,200, who quoted that number? Anyway, and so maybe, maybe half that many are households, or less than half that many probably, and so what's our additional cost going to be? And, you know, we're pensioners, we're not wealthy. How much more is this town going to cost us? For Pete's sake, this is already New York. New York.
Thank you, Ms. Scriber. There are some more names on the original list, so I'd like to call for the first time speaking Jay Payton.
So I just wanted to say, I started coming to these meetings a little over a year ago when I first found out how intense this was getting. And I wrote a letter to Mark in the town and kind of gave the history of my family in this town, and my family's pretty expanded in this town. And my family has had several businesses in this town. And we now have the oldest non-agricultural business in this town. Family business, I should say. And none of these businesses would start if this zoning goes through. They all started in the homes, every one of them started in the homes. People start business in their homes because they can't go out and build a building and start their business. And so it just doesn't seem like, it seems like you're taking away the opportunity that people have to become themselves and to develop their business into something that they can live off from, not just have it for a hobby. But there's a whole lot of people that can't just start a business and say, I'm going to have my business put here where you want it, in the size of the building that you want, because they can't start it in their homes. You're going to eliminate all the opportunity for people to do that. The other thing that I put in the letter is that people in this town were so together before this started. I work with my neighbors and friends all the time, and people in this town, I work for people, and I go there, I shake their hands, and I'm not just there to fix their water pump. They ask how my family is, they make cookies, we have, sit down and talk to each other. So it's, it's just like, it's part of my life, it's not just my business, and these people are part of my life. And now this whole thing is just tearing everybody apart. And I warned the town board at that time that this is just going to get worse and worse and worse the more you push it. And now you can see what has happened. It's come, it's come to fold. And I really wish everybody would stop back and kind of think about those things that I talked about at the beginning of this whole process. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. Next speaker is Lori Morse.
Hi, I'm Lori Morse. I was just handed some thoughts from Sandra, who was not able to be here, so I'm kind of just reading this for the first time. So I'm going to do the best I can with her thoughts, and then I also added a couple of my thoughts at the end, so. Sandra wanted to discuss overlays. Overlays are not required by federal, state, or local government. Our zoning committee and ultimately the town board is choosing to add overlays when not necessary. Other options do exist. Overlays will lower equity in people's homes. For most people, their biggest savings, their retirements, you know, that's their livelihood. Overlays hurt disadvantaged people by requiring surveys to challenge to Board of Appeals, which can cost at least $1,500. The Board of Appeals is not qualified to make these kinds of environmental decisions as they are merely handpicked, local residents chosen by the board. They could be denying residents' requests because they do not have the knowledge to make the right decisions. Critical environmental areas, CEA, may be used to ensure sensitive resources are considered during SEQR reviews. Establishing a CEA is a means to document the environmental sensitivities or unique features of an area. Communicate the community's desire to protect specific resources and ensure those issues are properly assessed under SEQR and considered as part of the land use review and approval processes when development is proposed within the CEA. CEAs are typically designated by the local legislative body but pursuant to state SEQR regulations. CEAs can be established by any agency that conducts SEQR reviews by simply creating conservation overlay zoning 10 photo, Kim Cupid resolution following a public hearing. Once entered into the state's database, any two SEQR environmental assessment forms completed for a project or action within the CEA will automatically be flagged with the CEA. Designation so that the lead agency can consider the impacts upon the CEA's special attributes in its SEQR review. Compared with other resource protection options, adopting a CEA may be less likely to cause concern or controversy because it does not add any new regulatory restrictions outside of those substantive requirements that already apply during an SEQR review. Also, also the commercial zone, let's talk about the commercial zone for a minute. Why is the large commercial zone on Route 79 limited to only 88 acres? All of those 88 acres have businesses, so no room for new. That's 14 parcels with five businesses. The one commercial space available on that lot is ours on 79, and what we want to put there, we can't because of zoning. And someone said earlier, this does not affect businesses. That's incorrect, because the one thing we want to put there, we can't.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Ms. Morse, would you want to hand in that piece that has the URL on it so that we can get a record of the backslashes and everything else? Thank you.
Yeah, and there's additional comments I think you could do.
Thank you very much. Next first-time speaker is, I think first-time speaker Kathy Mix.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank the commission for what they've done. I think you've had a very hard job over the last couple of years in doing what you've been doing, and I'm sure you're being grateful that you're getting down to the end and getting ready to handle it off to the board. So actually, my comments aren't necessarily for you, because I think you're in the tail end of your journey. My comment is to the board. I hope you take as much care and consideration as these people have up here, and listen to us, and listen to the people, and note that this is a democracy and that zoning is not a party issue. Zoning affects everybody. To be honest with you, zoning will not affect me. It'll affect my kids and my kids' kids. We're pretty much set in the way what we're doing in life and how we're going to retire, but I'm saddened to see the disdain and the dissension that has happened in this town. That's not why I became a member of this town. I became a member of this town because of the community we're in and the people that are here. And to see the war in the valley saddens me immensely, and I like to go and reiterate what Bruno said, as public servants, as I have served for 30 years. What does this do for us? What good is this going to bring besides more dissension? And I'm saddened to see that, I think, we forget that we're human. Everybody in this room is human. We all put our shoes on, one foot at a time, pants on one leg at a time, but we're forgetting that we need to put the human back in humanity, because I think we've lost that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mix. Next speaker is Hannah Wiley.
Good evening. I have some thoughts from Laura McDonald, who couldn't make it tonight, and then a few thoughts of my own afterwards. So Laura says, and excuse me, I've just read this. How come the zoning commissioner is on the same political board that oversees potential candidates? How come the liaison between the town board and zoning commission is also a town board member? Why not an independent party? How come the same circle of people are all running the same wheel? If diversity truly exists in this community, how come more generational residents and members from the other side, or no side whatsoever, are not seated on more appointed positions? If one party is running the town, how come there's so much difference? Why not allow that party's members to nominate a diverse group of candidates? What are they afraid of? And without stating the way people were chosen, please tell us the reality. Who is on the various committees and subboards branching off of the town board? How long have they lived here? Which party are, oh, which party do they belong to? No runaround needed about what the process was. What is the reality? Just answer the questions, she said. That's it. And then my thoughts, pretty plain and simple, I just want to thank Jon Snow for saying what he did. He did a really nice job and kind of made me a little sad, but I just, I want to elaborate on the point that I can't, we're all just so sick of hearing that this is to keep Caroline rural. We're just tired of it. There is no way that any of you would ever understand the blood, sweat, tears, literal near-death experiences, sleepless nights, some cursing, just, our livelihoods are literally just to keep this town rural. So this feels like a massive slap in the face, and there's just no other way around it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. We'll go back to the, are there any new names over there?
There's one.
Oh, okay. Richard Ballantyne?
Thank you all for taking the time to listen, and thanks to everyone who has had the courage to speak out on this issue. I do not support zoning, and I hope that at least one or two more of you on the board can be persuaded to change your minds and drop your support for zoning. There's no shame in changing your position on this issue, especially after you've listened to us and hopefully become more fully informed about the consequences of your proposed zoning law. It goes without saying that your job is to represent your constituents, so I think like if you really care about us, then why do you not delay the enactment of zoning until after the election in November? That way, we, the people, can essentially vote on it, either by re-electing you or by voting into office others to replace you. Do you not realize that it will be more embarrassing for you if you hastily enact zoning, only to have it repealed right after the election? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. New names? No, no new names? Okay. Back to round two, and again, I apologize for making the name, I can't read it, but again, I'll go to David Bowie. David, David B. something, and I can't make out the last name, but it looks like Bowie to me. Any, any takers? Are you coming up to speak? Are you coming up to speak? No, no.
He's going up the door.
Oh, you're going to sign in? Okay, great. Okay, so David is not here or not speaking. Just want to be clear. Okay, next speaker is John Morse.
So I just want to kind of reiterate a little bit of where I ended, because I got in a rush at the end and kind of picked apart a few comments that I thought were notable tonight. Basically, I ended my previous by saying there's no way to put zoning in that doesn't hurt the disadvantaged folks, especially the financially disadvantaged. More demand, less supply equals higher costs. It's a playground for the folks who have the financial privilege to enjoy it and not for those who don't. Very simple. Some comments that I thought were very notable tonight and one that especially, I think that last week's meeting was an embarrassment that was mentioned earlier, that was just unbelievable. Secondly, Karina, I want to mention her situation first. There she is. Ever since the first time that she spoke and told her story, that's one of the things that's tugged at my heart. This poor girl was denied to live next to her family when all of New York State and all the DEC and any health department regulations on wells and septicants and everything else would have let her move in next to her parents, and they could have been next to their grandparents, and Danby made her spend money to get an approval and denied it. And that can happen here, and there's nobody in here that can say it can't. It's going to happen. And then we're going to be shameful, just like Danby was when they denied her. It's going to, it's going to look bad on this town and the people that do it. And, you know, not only that, but Danby started their process with, and we might say, well, it can't happen, you know, we're not going to dictate the size of the acres or whatever, but you put this zoning in place and it's going to have scope creep, it's going to grow. And that's what happened to Danby. It started out with three and five acres, next thing you know, it's 10 and 15, or I've even heard 25 at this point. So you've got something that you need 10 acres to get into or 25 acres, even though that wasn't there in the beginning? Who is that catering to? The question that Bruno asked. It's not catering to the folks who are already struggling, that's for sure. It's only catering to the folks that can afford 25 acres. That's who they want living there. And you drive through those fields on the top of the hill in Danby, it's exactly what we've talked about, it's McMansion. Here's a house surrounded by 10 acres, there's a house surrounded by 10 acres, and it goes on. That's what we're looking at in the future here. Some other things. Susan made a comment that, you know, let's just make it mutually agreeable, you know, that's good zoning. I can promise you folks that your opinion does not dictate my opinion, and there is no way that this is going to be mutually agreeable in this town. We also heard that it's, someone's been assured that it won't affect their neighbor's business. Well, I can assure you, it affects the future of my business and my retirement, and there's no doubt about it. And that's going to affect a lot of other folks who wanted to start a business here as well. We heard that it's to help us, you know, have control over outside interests coming in here. Well, what it's doing is it's taking control of the inside interests, the people that are already in this town as well. So you can't have one and not the other. What else? You know, I liked the comment that Holly made, who would want zoning? Who wants to put their name on that at this point? You know, you're looking at the rural character already of this town. I loved that. That was great. Um, Cindy said she wished that the, the commission's task force was to investigate zoning instead of create the proposal. That's great. Guess what? You can still vote no. You know, you can vote no and feel good in your soul that you didn't push through something this discriminatory.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Next speaker is a first-timer, John Confer.
I'd really rather address the group here than the board, so.
You need to speak in the microphone. If you want to, if you want to turn the microphone around without breaking the cord, you can.
Hi, folks. On a conceptual level, I'm really in favor of zoning. But I have heard overwhelming angst tonight, and, and I do believe in democracy, and I, I would really suggest that the board have a major reconsideration. But, um, I'm sort of a middle-of-the-roader in a way. Uh, I'm certainly one of the elitists who have been condemned here so vociferously. On the other hand, uh, my wife's ancestors cleared Potato Hill Field, and so I have been here at least as long as the ancestors of anybody in this room. And speaking from both sides, I, I, I wanted to describe to you why a self-professed elitist would like zoning. Uh, I have seven acres up Hammet Hill. Uh, I taught ecology until retirement. I have a continuing research project on my land on Hammet Hill. In, in the time that I have been here, driving in Sliderville-Harford Road, there are nine new houses along the road in that time. There will be new houses along Hammet Hill, uh, in the property on both sides of me. And, and I came out here, I moved out here and chose this land because I liked the undeveloped aspect of it. That may make me elitist, I guess it does. I'm a self-professed elitist. But there is my right to enjoy that and my right to, to wish that the town would stay that way. I've conducted a great deal of research with students on my project, um, projects on my property. Uh, they, many of, several of them have gone on to be professional ecologists who try to do good things, uh, in, in maintaining a, a pleasant environment for people to live in, partly because there is a really, truly rural environment that I live in and around the area where I live. The development that I've seen on, uh, Harford-Sliderville Road, uh, would weaken, come close to destroying the environmental value that I enjoy and, and that I came out here to enjoy. Uh, I concede to democracy and, and the interests of what appears to be a majority, um, and wish that you would keep in mind that not all elitists, uh, are newcomers. I don't think there is anybody here who has ancestors who have been around here longer than I have, or my wife has.
Um, let's, uh, Mr. Confer, uh, don't ask questions of the crowd, please, but finish up your comments.
Uh, I, I, I am, uh, I am truly close to tears with the divisiveness, uh, that I see that this has brought. Maybe that was inevitable, I, I don't know. But the spirit of debating the differences in opinions has become too harsh for my sake, in my sense.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Could somebody, could somebody reposition the microphone, please? Could you move it a little bit closer, because it really does need, just, yeah, there you go, thank you. Next, second-time speaker, if, if they wish, or second time in calling on them at least, Charles and Shakita Baylor. Okay.
It's been a long time.
Um, if you, if you'd like to be heard, you need to come to the microphone, please.
I'm correct, the guy here, I've been a long time ancestor. My family's been here for the 1800s. I've talked, heard this guy talk about chains. We don't want no chains. We've been chains. I think, I remember Bonza's Trading Post, Red and White, all these other places. And I still think Sliderville should be a district where we can have stores in. And I talked to somebody, I'd like to see the coffee shop going. Now, we don't need zoning. And you're not gonna stop the changing, because we all got family here. And family just keeps growing. And I really don't have much to say, but I'd just say I don't like zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Baylor.
I think the town board, you folks, have really not listened to what people are saying and the feelings and the passion that they have with, we're, we're talking about a lot of generational families, people who've been here for a long, long time. I'm a newcomer to the town. I've only been here 54 years. But as a businessperson, I've come in contact with many of the people that are here. And I think the board has taken advantage of this COVID thing, and I think that you've, you've got those masks on for more than one reason. You really need to look at the people, these residents, that are concerned about their property and what goes on, and I haven't seen a plethora of people that say, oh, my gosh, I want that zoning. You're not listening. You're not hearing the people. You really need to take a good look at what's going on. There's a couple of things that I have that are unique to the town. I have the only airport in town. But yet, you know?
Yeah, and I'm gonna stay there and I run my horse out.
Yeah. And, you know, you just, you just not, I look at the map, I see you've got the state parking area on the wrong side of the road. Can I collect revenue, because part of it's on my land, that parking area, all of a sudden, where you've made your map? You really need to take a look and talk to the people that are making this stuff up, because you're not listening to the residents. You're sitting up there, it's almost, you know, sporting on being pompous. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. Uh, next speaker, I'm not sure, is here, Jakim Halton. I think he might have left. Okay. Uh, next speaker is Jon Snow. Next speaker is Bruno Schickel.
So the gentleman that spoke earlier and said he was, um, a self-proclaimed elitist, I enjoyed his talk very much, and I think that the board should listen to him, or the zoning commission should listen to him, um, that things are overwhelming. But it was struck, it struck me is, he has his, he was very proud of it and very open about it, he has his, and he wants to keep it just the way it is. He doesn't want any more houses. He doesn't want anybody else moving in. He wants to sort of create a steady state, suspended animation. And the reality is, that's just not gonna happen. And, you know, Susan, you talked earlier about the beauty and the historic and all that. And the truth of the matter is, everything that we have here, that we all want to preserve, was created by the freedom that we had because there was no zoning, because we were able to adapt and modify and change and alter and evolve as a community. Now, my wife's ancestors, Janungs, came in a crabbard wagon pulled by oxen in the 1700s. Think about that. They came in and they cut down the trees to the top of the hills, and they farmed, and everything was carved up into little farms. And then from that time on, there's been changing going on all the way through the process. And the things that we love, the barns, these massive barns that we love, lots of them are bigger than 3,000 square feet. Yet you're limiting a formula business to 3,000 stair feet because you know that'll prevent a dollar general from coming in. Okay? And so there's, you create all these things that are just completely unnecessary. And, you know, people talk, oh, there's no, we're not gonna segregate. Zoning, by its very nature, segregates. It's a zone here, a zone there, a zone there, certain things you can do here, certain people can live here, and this size, a lot and a variety. It's, by its very nature, it ends up discriminating. So, the other thing that I just, um, some random thoughts, but the Beesmer hamlet, has it struck anybody, that the Beesmer hamlet is almost bigger than all the other hamlets combined? Now, I wonder why that happened. You know? I wonder. And, and, and that's, that is the special interest that is at work, the people that have an inside track. It's the corruption that starts the process going of controlling and writing the rules. Because now we, certain group control the rules. The last thing I would say, and it wraps up what I started earlier, is, my question to you was, where is your compassion for your neighbor? And I, I really mean that, it's not rhetorical. I would really ask you to look at that and question that. And I would say, there is an obvious solution, obvious solution. You have a subdivision review board right now. You have a subdivision review process. The problems, to the extent there are any, could be dealt with by simply tightening up some of those subdivision re- review regulations and just putting those in place. You do not need 146 pages of regulation that is gonna bury everybody with frustration and expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schickel. Uh, are there any new names over there? Dwayne Austin? Is that D-U-A-N-E or D-W?
D-U-A-N-E.
Thank you.
So I was, I was hoping everybody here could help satisfy my curiosity as to something. I, I haven't been taking a, a huge participation factor in this, in this process, but every time my wife comes home ranting and raving, it's, there's always the same thing going on. So I was wondering if everybody here could raise their hand.
Um, we, we, we don't allow that kind of participation, so if you would speak to the.
Why not? It's a town meeting. How many want zoning in this town?
Sir, this is, sir, this is.
How many do not want zoning?
Sir, this is a public hearing. Would you please at least speak into the microphone?
I would especially like to see a show of hands from you folks. Are you, would you like to see zoning?
You have your comments, this is your time to make comments.
My comments are, I, I own 22 acres in the town of Caroline, amongst other stuff, but the 22 acres that I reside in are totally taken over by this overlay business. So if I go to sell my, my house, that I've, I've been there 25 years and done a lot of work on it to improve it, um, if this zoning had been in effect, I'd have a huge amount of homeless horses in this valley. My barn would be not, I wouldn't have been able to build the barn, and it's only on, it's on the only drier area that I could fit a 40 by 40 barn, because the state of New York decided in its infinite wisdom to dump everything off Speed Hill into my back 40. So I, I, plus I have 6,200 feet of warehouse in Sliderville Springs that is two houses out of the commercial zone. And if I go to sell that, I'm 63 years old, I want to retire soon. Somebody's gotta buy that that needs to take the grandfather clause along with the property. It's, it would cost three fortunes to turn it into a residential use. So I'm kind of screwed there. And I'm guessing everybody in here that raised their hand when I asked if they were against zoning is gonna be adversely affected as well. So I've always thought of our country as, as being a democracy. I think we could end this all with a big, monstrous town meeting, get everybody in the valley here and, and vote on this thing and see. I don't, that, that part of it I don't grasp, but you people should, you should, you should realize what's going on here. The only people that show up at these are mostly the people that do not want zoning, because there's a lot more of us than there are that do. And that's pretty much all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Okay, we'll continue, Karina Farsman.
So by the other man's definition, my father would be an elitist too, because he came up here from Brooklyn, Coney Islands, and he wanted to be out in the country when nobody else around, and we lived in the big farmhouse set back from the road right before you get into Sliderville. They rented that for 20 years, that's where I grew up. It was farmed by the Crispells around us, and then they moved to Danby and they had land, and he was willing, and he didn't want people around him, he didn't want neighbors, but he was willing to give up some of his land and privacy to have his daughter live nearby. And they have four acres of land, and they couldn't give away two acres of their four acres of land. And what John was saying before was zoning, once it gets started, they keep adding to it. So in Danby, since I've left, they've had a moratorium on building, they've had changes to their zoning, they've had probably two rounds of changes to their zoning. Now they're talking about, um, a no, noise ordinance. So now people in Danby are actually, like, making, uh... So now people in Danby are actually like making fuss about like having changes. Because why can't neighbors actually be respectful of each other and respectful of noises and not have laws and restrictions to tell us when and how much noise to make or not make? And that's how we should be treating the land also. We should be able to, able to decide how we're gonna take care of the land and not have all these restrictions to tell us how not to take care of it. And that's why I moved back here, was because I thought I would be able to live without restrictions on my property. And now I'm worried that I can't do what I wanna do to the property because of these restrictions, because I'm probably 300 feet from Six Mile Creek. And I became involved because something I thought I could have, the freedom to live without restrictions, is now being changed.
Thank you, Ms. Farsman. Uh, next speaker is Holly McGee. She's not here, okay, sorry. Um, next speaker is Tanya Van Camp. Next speaker is Julie Sorrell.
Trying to collect my thoughts, I had a couple things that I wanted to say. One of them was, when I was going door to door, trying to encourage people to sign the petition that, that we had going around. I went door to door in Boiseville, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, would not be allowed under the current zoning restrictions. Half an acre, right? Am I, the minimum lot size-
We're not, we're not addressing questions at this point.
Okay, well, I'm assuming that the minimum lot size, the most restrictive lot size anywhere is like, um, or the, anyway, is half an acre. Right?
Go ahead and make your comments, please.
Okay, well, anyway, they were all very happy to live there. I asked them, you know, are you happy here? Do you like it? And everybody that I talked to, because that was a question I asked everybody, everybody was happy living there. It was a good place to live. We shouldn't zone that kind of thing out of Caroline. There are places that are good for that. So that was one thing I had a thought on. And the other thing was that I wanted to appeal to the zoning commission. You all have done so much work to try to put this thing together. You were appointed to it, not elected to it. And I assume that you all wanted to do it because you wanted to do something good for Caroline. And so I would appeal to you, hearing everybody here, to go back, take another look. There's no rush. The only rushes to get this thing enacted are external. There's no actual rush. So go back, take another look at it. Go through all the pages and say, what can we do better? Because Caroline doesn't want this. We don't want the overlays. We don't want all the restrictions. So go back, see what you can take off, see what restrictions you can remove. And try to make this, this thing something that at least if it's going to be shoved down our throat, isn't quite so onerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorrell. Chad Tibbles?
I don't know, I always shoot from the head when I come in here with any notes on them. But I'm listening to everybody, and there's a lot of damn good people saying a lot of good stuff here. One thing that caught my mind a little bit is we were talking about the water and why not. Everybody wants to protect water, the DEC does their thing. This town's done a lot to preserve the water, and maybe they should get recognition for that. I mean, the streams through Slatorville's been all relined and everything, it was eroding. Mark might have had part to do with that or knows about it, Buffalo Hill, Banks Road. So we are preserving water. Without this, it's happening right in front of us, things like that are happening. So there's agencies and things that protect us and people from doing those things, and it's already happening. So we don't need to go above and beyond, these things are good. If there wasn't, they'd already be breathing, breathing down our throats and telling us we're not doing a good job, but we are. And I just wanna, Charlie Baylor got up and, uh, you know, he passed it up a time or two. And he got the courage to come up, and that says a lot. That man has been here. He's a good man, I guys, I want everybody to remember his face, how he looked, what he said.
Thank you. Next, next speaker is Cindy Kennel. Um, next speaker, Jay Payton. You're good. Uh, next speaker, Lori Morse.
I'm good.
Next speaker, Kathy Mix.
I think there's somebody else that wants to speak.
Oh, sorry. Matt? Matt Mix?
Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm a retired dairy farmer, retired due to medical reasons. And we hear a lot of statements about the open spaces, the beautiful scenery and all that. I agree with all that. I think it's great. But if you want it, buy it. Don't expect somebody else to do it or keep it open for you. I spent my life being a dairy farmer and doing what I had to do, 16 hours a day, sometimes more, seven days a week. I own the land, I pay the taxes on it, and I wanna do with it what I please. And if it's to sell it to somebody for a good buck for my retirement, I wanna do that too. And I don't want them to be restricted of what they can do with it because somebody doesn't like the idea of what's going on. Now, as far as the rest of it goes, after 35 years of being a dairy farmer, I figure I've got 30 years to live, 'cause I'm pushing 60. My family history not counting, I may leave another 40 or 50. But, long story short, I'm gonna do what I want on it. And my kids hopefully will play farmer, but if they don't, it's up to them to sell. And if the restrictions are in place, they pay a lot of taxes for nothing. So if the restrictions are there, the water overlays, then the value of the land should be zero, and you don't get any money out of it. On the other side of that, I believe in civil disobedience. And I will sit on my porch and I will civil disobedient anybody who doesn't like my attitude. Because 20 years ago, I would have been a real jerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mix. Uh, next speaker is Kathy Mix.
I'm good.
Next speaker, Hannah Wiley.
Yep. Oh, I just, I want to just say a couple more things. I wanna thank you for what you said, and just have a couple things to say. Including the houses on Hartford Road, all of the new ones I can think of are my family. And our family's been here, our blood's been here since the early 1800s. A few of these houses sit back from the road, all clustered together, not bothering anybody. Another one of these houses that's pretty brand new sits on a farmer's pasture that he just decided to give to his daughter. That right there, that's how it should be, that's love. Our families are close knit, and that's an understatement. We grow here and we settle here, it really is that plain and simple. What else would we expect of farming families? Wouldn't it be pretty scary if all the farmers' children moved away and didn't stay here? It's inevitable, families grow. This is how we're here, and this is why we're here. So no zoning needed or wanted. Keeping it rural since 1850.
Next speaker is Richard Valentine. Next speaker is John Confer. Next speaker is Dwayne Austin.
Good.
Next speaker, Matt Mix.
I probably should refrain.
Would anybody who has not spoken yet like to speak?
You didn't give Charlie Baylor's check a second chance according to my list.
Oh, I did.
You did?
I, I called, I called the name.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, come on up. And, yeah, come on up to the microphone. And if, just for the, for the group, if you'll introduce your name again.
Jay, Jay Payton. Um, I forgot to do something. Anne Vandenmark, I talked with Anne. Anne, her husband just passed away last week, and, uh, so she couldn't be here. And she just wanted me to emphatically say that they are opposed to this too.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else who has not spoken like an opportunity to speak? I'll specifically ask the youth who are in attendance. There's been a lot of comments about generational issues, if any youth would like to speak? Nope? Okay. Anybody else who would like to speak? For a first or a second time? Okay, I'm seeing none. Oh, did you speak already?
I, once.
Once, oh, come on up, sorry. And remind us of your name.
Janet Nash.
Thanks.
It's just very briefly I wanna say, I have heard people say that we are afraid. We're not afraid, we're proud. That is where we're coming from, it's our pride. We're mama bears, and we wanna protect our land. The other thing is, is I keep hearing the generations and stuff, and I too, my family's been here for many, many generations. My husband has too. 1800s, the very beginning of it. We do not feel we have more rights. We do not. Our ancestors treated us and taught us better than that. We welcome newcomers. We, but all of this, we're much better people than a lot of other people are trying to make us out to be.
Thank you. Okay, one last call for first speakers, first time speakers. Second time speakers, who declined?
I gotta-
Come on, come on up to the microphone, please.
My brain's in slow gear once in a while, but anyways, we have a lot bigger issues in this town to deal with than zoning. How it's put together, development will come in one form or another. We can't stop it. We can try to control it, we're not gonna control it. And in 30 years, 40 years, the generations that are sitting here, except for maybe some of the young ones, will be gone. And it will be somebody else. As Mark told me, this is a fluid document. It will be changed every so often. But make it right the first time, please. And on the other side of that, I'm probably one of the oldest generation back through, because my ancestor was Widow Ursley, who was the first settler in the town. And it doesn't give me any more say than anybody else. We just have a long history of, through the generations, and photographs of seeing the changes in the town. And they're all good, for the most part. So we have to keep this in mind, change is coming, embrace it, make it, fulfill the town. Businesses bring in money. You need businesses that produce money, businesses that grow. Homespun businesses start here, but if they don't have any place where they can grow, they're not gonna do any good. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mix. Any first time speakers, or second time speakers? Come on up.
I skipped all the last times, I didn't wanna follow him.
Says he had to say something again, I guess now I have to do.
Would you just say your name again?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Kathy Mix. Thanks again for letting me talk. I too agree with Matt. You know, it's, we are winding down our time here on this earth, and it, it is gonna be the boys that are gonna take over for us, so, and they're, they're family, and they've stayed in the area, and I'm grateful for that. One of the things I wanted to, to thank Mark and the rest of the board was putting together the Ag Committee, 'cause I think that has been really the drive for a lot of keeping, keeping the town rural and keeping the Ag character. But there's something that we forgot. And I'm kinda taken back and thinking about what people have said about discrimination and about being elitist and not letting things. But what about the small businesses? Have they been represented by a committee put together to talk about, how can we grow Caroline and make it within the characteristic that we have in the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, but also make it so it thrives and doesn't die and become McMansions everywhere? 'Cause that's where we're going. So I wanna thank you again for your time and energy, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask any first time speakers, any second round speakers who declined when first asked. Okay.
You know, I think anyone who's gonna come has come. I think we could entertain a motion to adjourn and discuss that. And what I would say to the rest of you there, I however will certainly stay until 9 o'clock and answer any questions, but I won't take statements, of course, because it's just gonna be me, but I'm happy to answer questions.
We have a motion on the floor, on the commission members, to adjourn the meeting. It's approximately 8:27. Is there a second for the motion? Um, we have a second. Is there any discussion among the commission members? Uh, that would be allowing a third, a third, a third time, he has spoken twice. Okay. Excuse me, the commission is deliberating. Is there any discussion among the commission members about the motion? If, if we vote to adjourn. Okay, so. We asked many times. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. If the motion is not passed, we will continue here, and we'll, we'll continue to ask for first and second time speakers. If the motion does pass, we will adjourn in a couple minutes after doing a closing statement. So I'm going, I'm going to ask the commission to please vote on the motion. All those in favor with adjourning the hearing after the closing statement, please raise your hand to signal an affirmative vote. All those opposed, please raise your hand to say no. And it looks like there's no abstentions. So after the closing statement, the public hearing will be closed. So I'm gonna turn this over to the chair of the zoning commission to make the closing statement.
Shameful. Thank you for attending and for your comments. The zoning commission will consider the written and oral comments we received. We have scheduled meetings in March to consider changes to the preliminary report based on your oral and written comments. We will then vote on a final report. We will then submit the commission's final report to the town board. At that time, the zoning commission will dissolve, and the issue of zoning is then in the hands of the town board. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody for attending.